Hi Joyce, how are you?
Calling Councilmember Shoemaker.
Is it on?
It's on. Should be on.
Good, thank you.
Dave, don't get comfortable.
I'm sorry.
Good evening and welcome to the October 8th, 2012 Waschugle City Council Workshop Meeting. Rose, could you call the roll please?
Councilmember Boger.
Present.
Councilmember Plinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Greenly.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. Connie Jo did call a little while ago and said that she is under the weather. Also, Rose, if you can make a note for next week, she also indicated that she would not be available for next week's council meeting as well. Are there any members of the public that would like to address council before we get started this evening? Martha?
I'm addressing you this evening as the ECFR Commissioner, and I will probably be going around and thanking everyone. If any of you drove by Steigerwald the other evening when the flames were sky-high, you couldn't miss it. It was so visible. I think Sean thought the world was on fire from his house up there on the hill. It broke your heart because it was an incredible fire and it was a place that we all dearly love and see as a value to our community. So it did my heart good when I pulled over and saw all of our rigs in Vancouver and Camas and Waschugle and Skamania four out there together, literally beating the bush to put this fire out, as well as our city people that were out there to protect our waste management treatment plant from being taken offline. And it could have been so much worse. It just could have been. And I thought it was until the next day, and I went down and talked to Wilson Katie and Jim Clapp, who, by the way, Jim Clapp looked like a deer in the headlights because that's his baby. That is his legacy to our community is that Steigerwald Trail and the access to that area. So he was pretty shook up, as you can imagine. And one of the things that's gone right now, and the trail, of course, is closed for a while. One of the things that's gone is that entry bridge, if you've walked the trail. That is the only bridge they lost, surprisingly enough. It looked a lot worse, as you could imagine. It's a lot of acreage. So it was a little bit of a tentative evening. We had a lot of people mobilized out of ECFR. They were calling in every volunteer that they possibly could to get folks, and they came. And they staffed all our stations, and they came to fight the fire. And everybody did a good job, including DNR, who was there the day after, mopping up and spraying and clearing. So if you are interested in getting involved in getting this back up and restored, Wilson Katie and the Columbia Gorge Refuge Stewards would love you to volunteer. And where you go to do this? Go online at www-refugestewards.org. Click on Volunteer and contact them and let them know you're available, and they'll find you something to do and let you know. The more people we have, the better, because most of this area is being maintained by volunteers, most of it. So we hope you do. And again, thank you. Thank you to the firemen, the firepeople, the staff, all of you, who jumped right in there and helped. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Anyone else that would like to comment to council? Okay. Going into our first item, new business. Jennifer, you've got some updates for us on rates for district court and jail.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Before you tonight is a discussion on the 2013 district court and correction rates. This is a standard agreement that we review each year to determine, or the county sends us what the rates will be, and then we adopt them for next year. So the city and the county entered into an interlocal agreement to allow the county to provide law and justice services committed by adults and referred to by law enforcement agencies for misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors. The county, of course, bills for these costs, and the interlocal does address that it'll be updated annually. As you can see by the attached letter, it talks about the timeframe that they review to set these rates, and they are going up just slightly. It's pretty much a status quo, small increase. We paid $67,560.11 was the 2012 rate, so they're proposing the $69,000 for 1894. And then the other rates vary slightly as well. The recommended action will be next week to authorize the mayor to sign the attached addendum to that agreement.
I'm sorry, what was the previous year's number?
67,560.11.
Thank you.
Is there a breakdown of what these costs are for? Like whether it's, I mean, what exactly are the costs for? Are they just court time?
I believe it's to staff the court.
For the ones for district court.
For the district court.
That's it, staff and court. Has nothing to do with our crime rate or how many people go through?
The supervision and work crew rates would be dependent upon how many people go through. And there is an interview per case fee as well listed there. So some, the middle cost for corrections and the jail would be a per-use rate, but the $69,000 is a flat fee for them to manage district court.
Okay. Thank you.
And that number should be the total for the Camas and Waschugle District Court that's split between the two cities on a RORATA basis.
No, we have a separate agreement with Camas that we split those costs, so this is just Waschugle's portion.
The courts have imposed costs on the accused. Once they're convicted, it becomes part of their sentence. Do we recover any of those from when the court would impose the cost for some of these items?
I believe we get a small portion. Each ticket that's paid by defendants and that sort of thing, a certain portion comes back to the city, but it's not dollar-for-dollar.
I'm sure it's not.
We have brought up repeatedly over the last three years to both the county and to the Law and Justice Commission, the County Law and Justice Commission, the idea of trying to recover some of the jail time, some of the offender work crew time and that type of stuff. And we've been rebuffed every time on that. Their basic answer is, basically, you can't get blood from a turnip. You know, these folks don't have money. And my contention always is, some do.
Well, that's what I was going to say. This is basically a take-it-or-leave-it proposition, because are we going to build our own jail or what are we going to do?
We even asked the question if we passed an ordinance here on the local level and took that along to the county district court judges, if they would take that into consideration. And the answer was pretty much at that point, no as well. It's our decision whether we impose any of those on there, and we likely would not. Regardless whether you really want us to or not, we likely would not. It's been a little frustrating.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I just will mention one thing. We do, Skamania counties, per bed day is cheaper, and we do use that whenever we can.
How many beds do they have? Because we have bigger populations than Skamania County.
Yeah. Can tell you offhand, even Battleground is now sending some of their jail inmates up to Skamania County as well. Paul's right, it's on an availability basis. Camas also does the same. Dave?
What's the difference in time for the police to take someone to Vancouver or to take them to Skamania?
I don't think it's done on our diet. We don't transport. This is after, any jail time would be after they've gone through the court system, and at that point, it's the jurisdiction of the county sheriff to do the transports. So Skamania County would come down here to pick ours up. Clark County would pick ours up if they're not already in custody.
Is that a, I know that, as Paul says, we use that periodically. Is that a good way to reduce our costs, to use it more often?
I think we do try and use it as often as we can.
I think the courts have some say, as well as to where they can go to serve their time, because I think the person going to jail can find a, say it's not convenient or not close enough to family or that sort of thing. So they can have some sort of say in that as well, as to who goes to Skamania.
Yeah, we also don't have the, if we arrest somebody tonight, we don't have the option to take them to Skamania County. They're going to Clark County. So our officers will transport to Clark County automatically. It's at the time that their case is disposed and what their sentence may be or that type of stuff, when they make their arrangements for their time in incarceration from there. But if they're sitting in the jail for two days before they're released by a judge on their own recognizance or that type of stuff, and it comes out of one of our cases, we're on the hook already for two days for them.
The ability of someone who's being incarcerated to choose their place of incarceration sounds a little bit like the inmates running the asylum. One of the other issues that comes up is medical situations. The municipalities are responsible for medical care for inmates, and transportation costs from Skamania to care provider in Clark County or even Multnomah County is, negates any savings you might have.
It's an interesting point.
I don't know what the medical facilities are like in Skamania. I assume they're pretty slim. Okay. Thank you.
They're actually in another county. They're in Clickatad or down here. It's up in White Salmon.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Jen? Okay. So we'll have this one back next week?
Yes.
Thank you. Second item that we have for this evening is a discussion in regards to our parks board, increasing the number of the members of the board from five members, I believe, to seven. Suzanne, are you going to start?
I'm going to read from the park portion of the Waschugle Municipal Code, Section 2.20020, regarding the creation and eligibility of the park commissioners. There is created, there is created a board of park commissioners consisting of five members who shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the city council for whom shall be residents of the city and one of whom shall be a non-resident of the city so long as the member resides within the Waschugle urban growth boundary. No commissioner shall receive any compensation for his services. And I believe that Joyce Lindsay will be speaking about transitioning this board from a five-member panel to a seven-member panel.
Good evening. I grew up in Denver, Colorado, when it was a city with parks. I grew up two blocks from a park, and so I learned the adventures and pleasures of having a community with parks in it. And I've lived in many cities since then that didn't have that same responsibility or commitment. So when I was elected to the Waschugle Council and then became appointed as a liaison to the Parks Board, I was absolutely thrilled as I began to see what this city is doing regarding their parks. Last week, last weekend, a new park was dedicated, Hartwood Park. This Parks Board is incredible. There are five very dedicated people on it. And I have felt that by expanding the members of the board from five to seven, we're expanding the opportunity for two more people from Waschugle to become involved in our community parks. So there are several people that have expressed interest in serving on the Parks Board, and I feel if this is passed by the council, the appointments will not, they will be filled in a timely manner. So I'm asking for the support of the council to do this, to vote for this.
Brent? The Parks Board, there's, how many members from outside the city on it? In the UGA?
There are four resident cities, staff, sorry, board members, and there's one that is allowed to be a non-resident so long as it's inside the urban growth boundary.
Okay, so would we make, add that one to make that two, or would they all be residents of the city of Waschugle when we add the?
I think on the planning commission, we have seven members, and I believe only one of those is allowed to be outside the city.
Okay. All right.
Not to say that there's wrong or right either way.
And the other, okay, yeah, it's fine. The other question I have is, what's the attendance been like of the five-member board?
This current board, the attendance has been very good. We've had boards in the past where we've actually had difficulty filling the spaces, but this board is very active.
And you have at least two more highly motivated people that would like to serve?
I believe that there are at least two more out in the community, so.
Other questions from council? Dave?
In the past, we've had trouble filling positions from the park board. One of the things that comes from my field of academic expertise is the limits on the size of any group that is, and based on the type of group it is. The Parks Commission, as I see it, is an action group. They're not a debating society. But by moving close to the number of people in a group, which turns it into a debating society, which happens to be eight, I think you could change the way that the park board operates. From what I've seen of them so far, yes, they debate policy, but they very quickly move to action. And it's action that we're looking for, not debate. We've got enough of that here. I'm having trouble understanding why we would do this on those two bases. One, we've had trouble filling these positions before, and yes, we could fill them now. But we could also use these people on subcommittees and get their participation that way. And the other thing is, it moves the Parks Commission to a size which makes it unwieldy. And so Joyce, short of some information that would contradict all that, I'm going to have difficulty supporting this, but I appreciate your taking the initiative to bring it forward.
I am going to support Joyce on this. I have a number of friends, probably four plus, that, you know, all are members of our community and use our parks and have kids and use them weekly. And yeah, I've just, since I've held this seat, I've had a lot of people reach out to me saying, you know, how can I too get involved? And so when Joyce approached me about this, you know, I then went back to them, and I've had lots of great feedback. So there are people in our community that are looking to do stuff. They just, I don't think, know exactly where to start. So I am excited to bring forth their names because they're all great people. So that's my little two cents.
One of the responses when I brought this up to the Parks Board last week was, there were several comments, but one of them was finally, the more the merrier. There's a lot of work, there's a lot of, more comment or more opinion sometimes helps. And I have felt that there should be younger people on the Parks Board, of the families that use the parks. The five that are on the board are not young families. And I just think that our parks are a vital part of our city, and the people that are using them, actively using them, should be understanding more of what makes up our parks.
Jennifer?
Yeah. I actually am in support of this as well. I just did have one quick question, and I'm not sure it can be answered tonight. We have had instances where we haven't really had any applicants and have, you know, gone ahead and renewed, you know, some members of the board in their capacities over the years. And I was just wondering if we get to a situation where we have an opening, someone has to step down, and we aren't able to fill it. How, do they just continue on with a vacant seat, or basically that's how it's going to work?
Well, it's like any others. I mean, we, and I don't recall, have we had a problem in the last two or three years filling vacancies in the parks?
Maybe not in the last two years, but... We actually have. We had a period where we didn't have a quorum for several meetings. We didn't have a member or maybe two members or one was not able to attend for a while. So we did have a little trouble there.
Yeah, which adding members could make your quorum problem a little bit easier, more to choose from.
Could also wig it harder. It'll raise the quorum.
Well, right now it's three. It would raise it to four.
Yep.
Yeah. From an administrative standpoint, we don't have any problem increasing, especially if we've got folks that are involved, you know, from our side. Certainly, more volunteers, the better, if we've got folks out there that are interested. So we certainly don't want to be any cold water on the idea. It just brings more brain power to the table. But in answer to your question, yes. Even on the cemetery ward, you know, that one, for quite a while this last year, we didn't, we were one member down, but they continue to meet while those are still there, and they're all still advisory to the council as well, so.
Cemetery board is a lot harder to fill, those vacancies on, as you can imagine.
You should never talk about cemetery ward and vacancies all at the same time.
Probably.
Other questions from council?
Well, the only thing I'll point out, I'm a general counsel of a couple of public corporations from a certain unnamed city to the west, and it has chartered some separate corporations. And I've had city staff come, that city staff come to me and say, do we have to have seven? Because it's just that, the quorum requirement, and it turns it into a bit of a hassle. But, you know, they manage, and they can get by. And it's a little different situation. They're professional boards. They're hard to find people with that expertise to go on them. But in this case, I think it's great to broaden public participation, and if you think there's the interest there, I'll go, I'll support it.
I think it's telling in this case where you've got the Parks Board that's coming forward unanimously, suggesting it as well. Paul?
Don isn't here, but how about language that says up to seven? That way, if you've got a vacancy, you just declare it vacant, and it changes the quorum Just an idea, I think this is great if we've got people involved.
We can throw that back to him right now. He's prepared, if you're, if it's sounding like this is somewhere that we want to go, he's prepared to bring something forward, just simply changing the five to a seven, so. Dave?
And I agree with Paul. I think that's a great idea. But I would reiterate that there are other ways to get people involved in the parks work. And subcommittees of the park commission are a great way to do it. You get to sort out your volunteers, get a read on them, and decide who you want to actually sit on the commission. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yep, we'll throw that feedback towards Don, see what he comes back with, and possibly bring you some options for next week.
Thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Okay. Once again, any members of the public that wish to address council before we get into our comments and then break for the evening? I have, under Mayor's report, I've got just a couple of items for you. Again, my personal thanks to all the folks who assisted on Friday evening. I know even the fire department believed at one point that they had a pretty good handle on that fire out there, and it quickly went back out of control in a heartbeat. So it, I've made a couple of phone calls and sent messages to Jim Clapp today, asking how we can get involved in helping to get that thing back up and going as quick as possible, if we can bring volunteers in to remove that old boardwalk or get donations, put the new one in, or even the volunteers to help put it in. But I'm feeling he's a little busy. I haven't gotten an answer back from him yet. So that offer is out there, and we'll certainly keep the council up to speed as well as the community on any of those efforts that we can help with on that. But echoing Martha's comments, it was a tremendous effort by everybody all the way through in doing what we could, and there were an awful lot of apparatus down there throughout the night and the rest of the weekend. So kudos to everybody. We will see some, likely see some pretty healthy overtime payments coming through off of the wastewater treatment facility. That facility was down until about 6:15, 6:30 on Saturday night. Once we lost the power poles out there, when we lost power out there, everything had to go to backup generators. And the backup generators are good for the pumps and that type of stuff, but our, the rest of our system is completely operated manually once the power is out. So all of the other flows, all of the other various stuff that they've got down there actually needed to have people there to continue to keep them operating and keep them adjusted and keep everything in check. So our crews were down there for, after an eight-hour day, they were down there for basically another 24-hour period from the time they got there until the time they cleared on Saturday evening. So they, we did get phenomenal response from Clark Public Utilities as well in trying to get that power back up. They actually had to reroute it through another part of the city because they can't just simply cut those lines. And they were in the wildlife refuge, and they didn't have a way to get into them or anything else. So they deadheaded them on both sides and rerouted the power system all the way through. So it was nice for them to make that offer and to also make the offer for some of their backup generators, which are greatly larger than ours are as well, to have those brought in if needed. And then the second portion, ironically, the next morning, we dedicated Hartwood Park. So we lost 140 acres of the refuge on Friday night, and the next morning, dedicated Hartwood Park. So thank you to the council members that were there, and again, kudos to Suzanne and her staff in getting all of that facility up and ready to go for Saturday morning for the dedication. Items from council? Joyce?
Hartwood Park is wonderful. And since we can't walk Steigerwald, the group that I walk with now, we think we'll go over and walk up and down the hill at Hartwood. It's just a lovely space, and I suggest everybody go and visit it. I will be sending out a message to my friends about how to get involved into rehabilitating Steigerwald. It was, I was over there Saturday morning, and I was surprised, there was like a traffic jam. All the people that had come just to walk had no idea that there'd been a fire. And cars kept coming in, we had to keep turning them out. There was a volunteer on the gate because the gate could not be locked because there were still firemen out there beating out the fires. And I guess they can go under, and then they pop up someplace else. So Saturday morning, it was still kind of iffy around there. It's just a sad thing.
Paul?
I talked to, actually talked to some people from the wastewater crew, and they in particular wanted to shout out a great thanks and recognition to Rod Morris. There's a building out there that looks kind of dumpy and metal and couldn't be all that important, but it has a half a million dollars' worth of equipment in it that runs the wastewater treatment plant. And the fire department, the firepeople, didn't know that, and they were about to leave, and Rod Morris said, oh, no, 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 wait a minute, you've got to protect this building. And they did. And it, several people mentioned that to me. And yes, the wastewater crew, normally you can run that plant with one person because it's all the electronic controls, and if you go to a manual system, you've got to have a minimum of three people on site, and sometimes it's worse than that. And given how thin our staffing is, that people put in long hours out there. The other thing that strikes me is, it's probably close to 30 years ago now, Yellowstone Park burned. And all of the local people said, oh, my God, the park is destroyed. And the wildlife people said, well, not really. It's a rebirth. And we certainly are very fortunate that there was no loss of life and no economic property that was lost. But the, the refuge will come back better because a lot of what was burned was blackberries and canary grass, which are invasive and non-native. Hartwood Park, Suzanne did a great job. She has been absolutely fabulous about getting grants. And I remember an old story about Len Brody, who was quarterback of the 49ers long before they were a good team, and had a career day, beat the Rams, which is what they always wanted to do then. And he came into the locker room stripping off clothes, and the press looked at him and said, God, great game, Len. What did you do? What was different? And he said, well, you know, you throw it up against the wall, and some of it sticks and some of it slides off. And Suzanne has really been very good about throwing it up against the wall and be, not being disappointed, not being heartbroken when it slips off. She keeps going back, and she's been fabulous about getting these grants. On this Thursday, the AWC has a webinar on rate setting, utility rate setting. If there is enough, I will pay for the webinar out of my pocket, it's not that expensive. But if there is enough interest, I wonder if we could put it up on the big screen here in City Hall?
What time is that?
From noon to one. And then the other thing is, I will not be here next week. Kathy and I are going on vacation to Vancouver, B.C. And I hope to be back for the meeting on the 22nd. That's it. Thank you.
Items from, Dave?
Geez, seems like every time I leave towns, somebody tries to burn the place down. I, I spent the last couple of days at the Civil Air Patrol Oregon Wing Conference down in, in Medford and Jacksonville, Oregon, where we worked out how we're going to do search and rescue south of the river here. There is a group that does it north of the river too, and we assist their efforts all the time. But I chose specifically the Oregon Wing because the local representative for the local squadron here in, in the Portland area has an exclusive focus on emergency services, search and rescue. And that's what I wanted to do. The Public Safety Committee meets next Monday at noon at the Washougal Police Department Training Room. Brent, if you can make it?
Sure, I think so.
Okay, then we will meet because Connie Jo's out of town. She's...
Dave, as Mark Twain said, the ideal committee has three members with two of the members absent, so.
And we're halfway there. I'm so glad you made that point. It's precisely what I was trying to do in the discussion this evening, and, and that makes it much better. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Any other items for this evening?
Karen?
Oh, I gathered up some extras at my house, laundry soap and soup. For some strange reason, we have extra. And I was talking to the Interfaith Treasure House today. And so I thought I would ask them and see what they were approaching that season where people need help. So they are looking for laundry soap, cat food, they have plenty of dog food, toilet paper soup, top ramen, and always just financial donations because that's what they buy their meat with and for people. So, yeah, so I wanted to say that. And then there's a couple things I was wondering if anybody else wanted to join me on serving up smiles. I'm going to serve food at Hathaway Park, Hathaway Park? Hartwood Park is what I was thinking of. Hathaway School on October 17th. So no experience necessary.
I will be doing that.
Yes.
I've signed up.
Okay, good.
I will be out of town.
Oh, you'll be vacationing.
Just to warn you all on that, I know Mark Jasper from Sedexo, who made contact on trying to get everybody to do that. And I haven't heard back from him yet, but he was kind of like, this day, this day, or this day, this school, this school, or this school. And I said, what if we did all three?
Yeah.
I do it on the 17th, 18th, and 19th, and did all three of them. I haven't heard back yet, so.
Yeah, I haven't really got a response either, so.
I know, one of the gals, I was at the memorial service for Joyce Cox on Saturday, and one of the gals who's one of the leads at Hathaway said that they do have us penciled in for the 17th.
Oh, okay.
So that one sounds like that's on for sure, but I haven't heard about Gosling Cape Horn yet, so.
Okay. And then there was another event called Partner for Schools. There's a meeting on October 18th from 5:30 to 6:30 that I'm going to try to make it to, and it's at Washougal High School Commons. And it's just going to be, I think, a, a meeting about two-way communication between school district and community members. And there happens to be a concert there at 7:00 afterwards, so.
Thank you. Any other items for the group?
Mr. Mayor, could you suspend the rules for a moment? I forgot an issue.
Jump on up, John.
Okay, thanks.
I forgot to mention, we're having a candidate's night, our group and the League of Women Voters, Wednesday night, Canvas Library, doors open at 6:00. The candidate's night will be from 6:30 to 8:30, and it will be for the four candidates for county commissioner. Only county commissioner races. People coming in the door can write down any questions they might have on a three-by-five card, so there won't be no questions from the audience in that kind of a format. So if anybody's interested in the, all four county commissioners have committed to be there. It's at the Canvas Public Library upstairs in A and B. So if anybody's interested in that.
John, what time did you say it is?
Pardon?
What time did you say it was?
It, doors open at 6:00, and we have to be done by 8:30 because they close the library at 9:00.
So is it 6:30 to 8:30?
6:30 to 8:30 is the actual thing. But like I say, you come in at 6:00 o'clock, and they, the library starts announcing on the PA system when they don't want to work over. So we have to be out of there by 9:00 o'clock, so.
It's Wednesday night.
That's Wednesday night, the 10th, right? Doors open at 6:00, and the program starts at 6:30. So, and you can write your questions down, but there may be no questions just from the audience, that sort of thing. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't think of that earlier.
Not a worry. Thanks, John.
All right, thanks.
Any other items from council?
I'm just going to be in touch with my fellow counselors on feedback for the RFA, on which, where they want to go with that in general. And it'll just, I'll just have one-on-one meetings, so there won't be any, and I'll keep everybody's opinion to myself, so there will be no Public Meetings Act issues.
So you're going to meet with each council member individually?
Or phone call.
I think that does get into public meetings, does it not?
If I, if I don't disclose it. If I went and said, Councilmember A thinks this, Councilmember B thinks this, I think this, what do you think? That would be, but if I keep it all to myself, it's...
As long as he doesn't discuss the results of what other folks contributed, then he can do that. Because then it'll come back to a, the RFA meeting where it's a committee.
I don't know how else I'd do it.
Open session? See you on the other. Okay. And Paul, again, you're going to be gone next week as well?
Yes.
Okay. Any other items from council?
Dave?
Last year, we had a, a session, and I thank Dr. Martin for arranging this, with Brian Sontau. His office, he's the auditor, he was the auditor for the state of Washington, and his office is the one that handles the Open Meetings Act violations. And he made a statement there that many subsequently disagreed with. And that was, it's okay for four council members to discuss issues as long as they don't decide among themselves how they're going to vote on it. Do we not have that discretion?
Not my understanding that we don't.
Yeah, the courts have not exactly taken that point of view.
You can all get together for social events, you can get together with the events that have nothing to do with the city, or you can all show up at a debate and all sit in different corners, that type of stuff, and not actually be in a group and not violate it. I believe anytime that the four of you come together, four or more of you come together and discuss city business, you've just convened a meeting.
And that is precisely what seems to me to be so limiting and so nonsensical. Is there any way to start a movement to change that?
Well, I'm sure that there are ways to start a movement to do it. Whether it's successful or not, probably, obviously, a whole other question.
Well, I, I think there's a great deal of misunderstanding around the, around the issue. Would a letter to Brian Sontau, to the auditor, perhaps get us some clarification?
I believe that anything coming from the auditor's office would give you clarification. I believe that Municipal Research also has extremely good information on the entire subject, even down to the frequently asked questions. If we did this, this, and this, are we good or are we not? And we could certainly probably put that together. Jennifer, do you want to put that on the list for potentially an upcoming workshop as well?
And I'd, I'd be happy to work with you on that. I don't like to hand things to the staff without volunteering to help.
I know some of the opinions even go so far as to give guidance on four of you writing to a meeting in Wenatchee in the same vehicle, and that it's okay as long as you're not discussing anything while you're in that, other than social things and how the kids are and what's happening with the salmon runs or any of that type of stuff. But they've, they've got a pretty good amount. I, I would imagine they've hit with, been hit with just about any question.
Dave, refresh my recollection, sorry, may I speak, refresh my recollection on when the next RFA meeting is? Because if I could, it might be more efficient just to workshop this thing I'm talking about. I don't know if they...
Is it the fourth Tuesday?
Is it the fourth Tuesday? Then there would be time to, if we could do it on the workshop on the 22nd. It won't take long.
I... If there's no support for this, I don't mind dropping it off the agenda. It's just a, it's just a burr under my saddle because it does limit us in the performance of our duties. And I see I've gotten some agreement. If I get agreement from Paul Greeley, by golly, I've got a good point here.
I agree with you also.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so much, but again, we can, we can get clarification. I don't think so much it's meant to limit your abilities, it's meant to limit what you can do without having the public present, or at least invited to be present.
The key piece of...
And I think that's an unintended consequence.
I'm not sure it's unintended. The key piece of information about OPMA is that the legislature excluded itself.
No, that's, that's standard.
Well, yeah, but when you have 98 House members, you have to have 50 together and violate it, so I don't know.
Majority caucus?
Caucus is, I like the caucuses itself violated. We brought up like the partisan caucuses and stuff like that.
Are the, it, the public is allowed into the caucuses, are they not?
No.
No.
They're not?
No.
You can get invited. I've been invited. They will invite you, but they're not allowed in the caucuses.
Because that would be a way out of the OPMA. It would at least not violate the intent.
And you'd have to, the media is one of the biggest triggers for it.
Okay. Got you. Thank you.
Of course, the caucus I was invited to was a minority caucus, so by its own terms.
It wouldn't violate. Any other items from council? We are adjourned.